We'll now come to order. Hello, I am Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education, and I would like to welcome you to the January 10th, 2024 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this board is being streamlined on the CCPS website at www.carrollk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15 PM. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Pataglia. Comments, questions? Seeing none, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the amendments for the unapproved FY25 Budget Work Session Meeting Minutes for December 18th, 2023.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigny. Comments, questions, corrections? Seeing none, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I am asking for the Carroll County Student Government Report, please.
I think we had one more set on that. One more set of minutes.
Mine doesn't say that. Okay, hold on. And what's the date on those?
The Board Meeting Minutes from December 8th.
Okay, yes, it doesn't have that on my agenda. All right, I need a motion for the unapproved FY25 Budget, no, meeting minutes from?
December 8th.
December 8th. So, by Dr. Dorsey, and seconded by?
I'll second.
All right, comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Sorry about that, wasn't on my agenda. All right, now we will have the Carroll County Student Government Report, please. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and thank you all so much for your time. My name is Flamati Flavanna. I'm a senior at Liberty High School and the CCSJA president for the 2023-2024 school year. Yesterday, CCSJA had an executive board meeting during which we finalized the materials for our agenda for the February General Assembly and talked about SHROB applications. Our student representative on the Board of Education, Sahithia Sodakar, will be hosting SHROB interest meetings for students to learn more about the position, and the last meeting is tomorrow, January 10th, at 6:00 PM on Google Meets, and students can speak with their SGA advisors to register. If you are a rising ninth or 10th grader, or if you're a ninth or 10th grader, I highly encourage you to apply for this position. It's definitely a very important and vital role for students. Thank you so much for your time and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, dear. And Andy, I need to apologize, I was worried about looking good on TV and I wanted to make sure, but I misread the agenda for December 8th, so I just want to let you know that. All right, now we will move on to public comments, and you all were supposed to laugh.
Now they did.
Okay, public comments.
To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the board through email or US mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if a citizen has specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the board meeting to arrange a time to respond to the questions. The superintendent of Board reserves the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter or general policy over which the board has authority. Personnel matters pending appeals, the actions or statements of an individual, staff, or items related to the employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The Board has scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15 PM. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the Board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers as is deemed appropriate. The Board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comment at the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or the board members. And our first speaker this evening is Marie Dubin.
My name is Marie Dubin. I was a CCPS parent from 2004 until 2020, when my youngest graduated. I have been a local education advocate for 10 years, and I am a candidate in this year's Board of Education election. I signed up to speak tonight on the topic of school safety, and I will get to that. But first, I want to make a quick comment on the current registration process for citizen participation. I find the requirement to be for or against the submitted topic to be simplistic and divisive. If I had been solely interested in commenting specifically on Agenda Item 6C, I would have struggled to choose, because I am against book bans and censorship, but for the reconsideration process and the right of all parents to manage which materials their kids can access. I am against all media with gratuitously explicit sexual content at every grade level, but for diverse, challenging, age-appropriate materials, especially those that tell truths about the world to teens on the cusp of adulthood. I am for protecting children from exploitation and creating nurturing learning environments, but must reluctantly be against the policy revision under consideration tonight as written, because the definition still lacks clarity and seems too broadly restrictive. I also fear it is unnecessary, serving to perpetuate the culture war being played out in our schools, instead of prioritizing many more important issues like school safety. I was a high schooler in the 1980s when the Parents' Music Resource Center crusaded to protect children from dirty and dangerous music. All they accomplished was the introduction of a toothless parental advisory label that served as a beacon for the rebellious, the curious, and the quite aware of what they are going through, teenagers who hate being babied. Little shout-out to David Bowie on the 8th anniversary of his passing there. Plus, another side note, look up John Denver's Senate Statement on Rock Lyrics and Record Labeling sometime. Anyway, today, those songs, and much more objectionable ones, as far as I would argue, are all readily available right here on our phones. So are all of the out-of-context excerpts recently used to challenge books. So are really risky perils. For any student with a smartphone, there is a very good chance that the innocence that so many who are valiantly trying to preserve is already gone and substantially endangered, whether from actual pornography and predators, cyberbullying, or unhealthy screen and social media attachments. It also just so happens that this distraction and the disruption it causes in classrooms is a large part of the troubling problem that you have been hearing from educators at recent meetings. Behavioral issues have become persistent, pervasive, and a threat to the well-being of teachers as well.
Please finish your thought.
Thank you, I have one sentence left. I am for figuring out how to make schools safer for all students and staff as soon as possible, starting with the mobile device problem. Thank you.
Next speaker is Shannon Hinkhouse.
I am here tonight to express my concern over the inclusion of gender identity topics in the family life unit of health class. We are living in a time of great distress and uncertainty among our youth. We are coming out of a pandemic in which our children really bore the brunt of the lockdowns. And now, when adults are publicly questioning and attempting to change their sex, children are being encouraged to do the same. In her book, Irreversible Damage, Abigail Schreier documents the struggles of several young girls suffering from gender dysphoria. She explores various underlying factors in the girls' dysphoria, such as autism, social anxiety, mental health issues, social media influence, and the social contagion factor. It is very alarming that historically, boys were the ones presenting with gender dysphoria, typically from the age of two years old. Before 2012, there was no scientific literature on girls ages 11 to 21 developing gender dysphoria, and today, girls constitute the majority of the cases. What is going on here? Today, the UK is reporting a 20-fold increase in referrals to gender clinics, driven predominantly by 15-year-olds, and now, the state of Maryland has determined that it is in the best interest of our students to introduce the concept that your sex may not coincide with your gender to 12-year-olds. The thought of a trusted CCPS teacher standing in front of their class and normalizing the notion that a child's biological sex may not really be who they are is so troubling to me. The students suffering with gender confusion do not need a teacher to affirm their confusion. They need interventions outside the scope of what can be covered in a middle or high school health class. We can teach students to be kind and respectful to all without presenting gender ideology as fact in the classroom. Do you really believe we are pointing children toward a healthy lifestyle when we present to them the delusion that you can choose your gender? Where does that leave the gender-confused child? Does it lead a young girl to explore an elective double mastectomy, or worse, to take testosterone to present as male? Is it healthy for a girl to take testosterone? What are the side effects? How does all of this affect fertility? Are we going to delve into all of these unanswered questions with the class? How can you not present the big picture here when the job of the health teacher is to teach children what choices lead to healthy behaviors? I say all of these things to convey the fact that gender ideology has no place in the classroom of a K-12 school. I am disappointed that CCPS has not formally outlined the downside to teaching these concepts, concepts that many see as purely ideological and against their deeply-held beliefs. We cannot allow our schools to become places where conservative facts are taught in Classroom A and leftist facts are taught in Classroom B. I implore you to reflect on all of this and to reach out to those at the state level, including the new interim superintendent, to discuss how CCPS can move forward without the inclusion of topics such as this. We owe it to our children and the integrity of the school system as a whole to push back on this serious lack of good judgment. And I have some handouts, too, from weascn.org, which is a resource a lot of the health teachers use.
Thank you. Next speaker is Belinda Lawson.
I'm here tonight to discuss school safety. My daughter is entering ninth grade next year. She is excited. I am terrified. I'm going to let you know why. Because of Maryland laws concerning restorative justice, diversity, equity, inclusion, and privacy laws, the children are now forced to learn in unsafe learning environments and teachers are not able to teach because of disruptive behaviors. This is all because teachers and staff are no longer allowed to guide, protect, and teach children. I want to be clear, diversity, equity, and inclusion laws and regulations are the reason why kids are unsafe and teachers can't teach. Some of these children leave home angels and come back entirely different children. They are in school seven to eight hours every business day. Bullying has become a living nightmare. Pictures are taken of children in bathrooms, lunchrooms, and classrooms, then posted online to be made fun of. Other children are now using squatting tactics, telling counselors and adults false information about students, and then counselors remove kids from their classrooms to have discussions, and parents are called to warn them, all because another student lied because they know exactly what the school will do. Imagine how much time, energy, and resources is being spent on false allegations and these squatting tactics. Imagine how much learning time is being wasted. A friend's kid was almost killed outside the lunchroom. Another student attacked him and threatened to shoot him on live video. This was recorded on his cellphone and posted online, as if it was attacked. That student was only suspended for five days and allowed back into the school. Imagine if that were your child. Imagine if that were your grandchild. What would you do? The kids are out of control. Discussing dildos and sex is now prevalent in all conversations in middle school. It's worse now, because Maryland health classes are now teaching kids exactly what toys to buy and how to use them. The classrooms are out of control, the teachers are begging for help at every single meeting, and now more parents are speaking up more than ever. Parents are also not being told about the bullying form. Instead, they are being sent to counselors, and they use back channels to try and resolve conflicts. None of these parents are being told about this form. I also want to ask, what is the point of a bullying form if it continues and gets worse? As far as explicit books, I find it incredibly disturbing that this needs to be defined and have numerous board meetings about this. My 13-year-old knows the difference between adult content and children's. If she can figure it out, so can the adults in this room. And if that's really a big issue, perhaps we need to talk about deeper discussions about the adults in CCPS that want these books. Without safe schools?
Please finish your thought.
And productive environments, learning loss will always be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brittany Davidson.
Hello, I'm Brittany Davidson. I have two children in CCPS. I am a former homeschool mom, so this was their very first year in public school. We did attend co-op, so they weren't, like, sheltered. But both of my children have learning disabilities, and I felt like they were getting to an age, and their father felt like they needed more than what I could give them. So we tried public school. For my one son, he is absolutely thriving, and the school has picked us up, carried us in their arms and said, "We're here for you, we support you, we're going to help your son however we can." And he has built his confidence. He comes home, he says, "Look, I got an A on my test, my teachers are so proud." He's had no bad experiences, no bullies, no bad teachers. The entire school's amazing. However, there's been a giant discrepancy, because my other son had the complete opposite experience, and instead of picking us up, helping us, making it a really nurturing, loving environment, knowing, like, where we're coming from and the fact that he has a learning disability, they basically, I feel, have discriminated that we were homeschoolers. I didn't feel the love, I didn't feel a lot of support, and they said, "Oh, it's our policy to let him fail so that he can get the IEP." But my other son's school did not do that. He got his support from day one, that he has just blossomed, and he has ADHD, dyslexia, dysgraphia, and dyscalculia, and he is thriving. I think his school deserves an award. It's Shiloh, I'm just going to put that out there. Thank you, Shiloh, I love you. You've done amazing for my son, the other school I'm not going to mention. But he failed. He lasted through about November before he had a complete mental breakdown and said, "Mommy, I want to kill myself and burn the school down." So he has not attended since then, I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional. He has not attended since then, but he has attended RBS. He is at RBS right now with my mom, and that's a phenomenal program. Thank you for having that for students like my son. And they are rebuilding his confidence. He goes Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for two hours. He reads for them, he writes for them, he's showing them how smart he is, and they tell him that he's smart. And he wasn't getting that kind of love and support at his school. And it wasn't until I said, "Hey, my son is suicidal and wants to burn the school down," and that's not my son. He's been the happiest, no depression, nothing, the happiest little boy. And it wasn't until I said, "Hey, this is what's going on," they said, "Oh, we'll get you an IEP right away." And I'm like, "Well, it's too late, because I can't get him back in the door." So I wanted to bring this to the attention of you guys, and if it is policy to let a child fail when they have a true diagnosis from a psychologist and diagnosis from Mount Washington Pediatric Hospital, if that is the policy, then how can I change the policies so that it doesn't happen to another child? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gary Foote.
Board members, commissioners, Superintendent McCabe, I will start with a question. How do you get to the swimming pool at South Carroll High School? This used to be something we asked every new hire when they reported to work for the first time. That was me back in 1991. How do you get to the swimming pool? It's on the third floor, right next to the bowling alley. No, if you haven't figured it out, South Carroll doesn't have a third floor, and there is no bowling alley. But there was supposed to be a swimming pool. That got cut sometime during construction when someone thought it must have cost too much. Of course, that meant that there would be no swimming pools in other county high schools, and a student interested in swimming would have to go somewhere else to join a swim team. And thousands of county residents graduated from high school, never learning how to swim. And that ends tragically far too often. Drowning is one of the leading causes of accidental death for teenagers and young adults. On a seemingly unrelated note, October 4th is National Walk to School Day, which makes me laugh every year. First of all, because we have this incomprehensible need to make a national day for almost everything, but also because, let's be serious, no one walks to school in Carroll County. Now, it didn't have to be that way. Our grandparents decided to build schools where the land was cheap, and that was certainly not where the people were. And they decided to encourage single-family home construction, which led to sprawl, as opposed to more compact options would have kept people closer together. So we have a county where a car is a necessity, no one walks, and public transportation basically does not exist. And good luck changing any of that anytime soon. You will make decisions tonight that will affect how I do my job tomorrow. You will also make decisions sooner rather than later, which will affect my grandchildren's grandchildren. I have heard almost no end to the wailing and gnashing of teeth associated with conforming to Maryland's blueprint, when instead, you could be recognized, recognizing that this is your chance to design the public school model for Maryland for the next generation. How cool would that be? So here's your choice. Debate made-up issues that have nothing to do with teaching and learning, or create 21st-century schools that are the envy of the world. I know what I would rather be doing. How about you?
Next speaker, Greg Malvo.
Thank you, board members, for allowing me this time. Again, my name's Greg Malvo. I'm an educator of 25 years, a current English and Literature professor, proud father of a student in our public school system, and running for one of the two seats available for Board of Education this year in 2024. I do think the blueprint is very important, and we need to consider to look at it, and that's been a point of concern for a number of board meetings. Like it or not, it's expected that it's going to have a huge impact on Carroll County public schools and around the entire state, with it comes positives and negatives. Concerning the positives or benefits, for one, it calls to increase the minimum teacher salary to $60,000 by 2026, which is excellent. Why should our teachers make less than teachers from other counties when they help produce students who consistently rate the top three with test scores in core curriculum? I appreciate that Carroll County teachers will be earning salaries that are closer to what they deserve. Second, the blueprint will bring additional mental health professionals and support staff in schools. And third, it offers multiple tracks in high school that lead to college, a technical trade, or immediate entry into the workforce. However, with all that said, there will be great difficulty in assuring that all of the initiatives are funded, and there are real concerns with the implementation of the blueprint. First, it's this 60-40 teaching split. 60% of the teacher's time dedicated to classroom instruction and 40% not is a problem on two fronts. First, it'll be difficult for Carroll and other districts in Maryland to find highly-qualified teachers to fill the gaps created by this mandate. Second, it will be the immense costs, maybe as much as $20 million annually, to hire additional staff to assure fair wages and benefits for these new employees. Another issue? Well, our county has increased the number of uncertified teachers from 1% to nearly 6% in a single year, and the entire state is unable to attract the number of teachers needed to fill every vacancy, and we could see levels of uncertified teachers reach rates in excess of 20%. Consider that certified teachers have made Carroll schools a tremendous academic success. Consider that certified teachers have made Carroll schools a tremendous academic success, not to mention that many teachers can expect the extra burden of increased classroom sizes. And yet another problem is, due to the wealth of our county, we can be expecting to pay sixty percent of blueprint costs. So I share the concerns with our commissioners and board with the price tag left for our taxpayers. Whether one has children or not in the system, with folks living paycheck to paycheck with harsh economic conditions we face, every single taxpayer dollar needs to be carefully accounted for. I appreciate that the board understands this and I hope that the student achievement remains the number one incentive in future decision-making, along with accommodating the needs of our teachers and having watchfulness over our taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Catherine Birling. And if I mispronounce your name, please correct me.
My name is Catherine Birling. I'm a Carroll County resident, CCPS parent, and CCPS educator with a master's degree in school library media. The past nine of my twenty-seven years as educator have been as a school librarian. Despite this experience, I have not been asked for input about recent CCPS school library issues, nor have my media colleagues. We were not asked about the book titles being banned. We were not asked why certain books might be in our libraries. We were not asked to help define sexually explicit content. Our board members with no school library credentials are implementing a definition which might be approved tonight, though I hope not. We were not asked for input on any version of the brand-new Appendix A form before it was implemented. This new form fundamentally changes our job. Media specialists met separately with our director and interim supervisor. We were assured at both meetings that there was no expectation to read the books we order. Despite that assurance, Carroll Magazine just quoted our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, saying, quote, "Library media specialists are expected to read the books prior to completing the library media supplemental verification form," end quote. We were not asked how this would impact our job or students. We were never before asked to fill out a separate document for each book we request. We get to know our students' and teachers' needs and use professional reviews and judgment to purchase books. We then submit requisitions with a printed list, just in a few pages total, that cite journals, copyright dates, sometimes specific reasons for requesting a particular book that looks like this. Now, we are required for each requested book to type our name and school, the book title and author, the publisher's recommended grade level and age bands, the requisition number, whether the book is sexually explicit, whether the book is appropriate for particular ages and grades, the journal reviews we read, and the reasons why we want that book to be in our collection. We are also expected to sign our name on each document, even though our name and school are printed on the form. We've been told our signature is a good faith effort. It's a shame you feel you cannot trust the professionalism of your CCPS media specialists. We order hundreds of books each year. We use professional resources and other factors to select books. Librarians do not read every book in a library. We curate collections. My library collection has ten thousand titles. Imagine spending even five minutes per form, per book. I teach twenty-five classes each week, run the morning announcements, read professional journals, read books for lessons, create displays, check books in and out throughout the day, put in help desk tickets, troubleshoot equipment, organize and coach battle of the books teams, oversee student media center helpers, run reports, weed out aged and damaged books, and complete inventories. Sadly, I do not have time to read every book I want to purchase. When we expressed concern over the amount of time this task would take, we were told just order fewer books. At the last meeting, board members immediately agreed to look into a teacher's concerns about cellphone policy. We have asked for the same professional courtesy of talking with us before making media-related decisions, which impact every CCPS student.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Jessica Brown.
Hello, my name is Jessica Brown and I'm the parent of two fifth-grade elementary school students in CCPS. One of my children is on the autism spectrum and he attends the autism program in Carroll County Public School System. On October second, my son was deliberately neglected by a special education teacher. The teacher refused to change my son's pull-up and denied him the use of the bathroom for the entire school day. My son's pull-up was filled with urine and visibly leaked through his light gray sweatpants all the way down to his knees. Multiple staff members witnessed this event and did nothing. The teacher admitted everything and was removed from the school. I had come to a temporary agreement for my son to-
Excuse me? I'm sorry. It appears this is a personnel issue you're raising?
No, it goes into, no, it goes into about the communication, the communicate, for special needs communication, and it gets off of her.
My concern is the board may have to hear a proceeding in relation to personnel and they can't hear public comment on something that they're expected to hear judicial-
It's already taken care of. They already know all of it.
The, the rule is that you can't talk about a personnel issue, so i- if you could confine your comments to something other than-
Okay, I can take them, I'll stop talking about her. I had come to a temporary agreement for my son to return to school during the investigation. I made it clear that none of the changes resolved my concerns for the safety of my son while in the care of the school. I still had questions and needed information, but had to wait until the investigation was over. I trusted the school had my son's best interests at heart and I was willing to cooperate with them. In the weeks that followed, my son's behaviors escalated, having to call a support team for the first time and the first time using kickboards and blocking mats while he was in the calming corner. I requested an emergency IEP meeting where I was told my son's behavior miraculously stopped. I addressed my concerns about his increase in behaviors and the school's inability to manage them appropriately. I asked the team to consider non-public placement, but it was denied. November fifteenth was the last day that my son attended school. That evening, I received a phone call, no, okay, I'll skip over that. I do not feel safe sending my son to school with no resolution. My son's education is extremely important to me, but his safety and well-being are my top priority. Behavior is a form of communication. My son is essentially nonverbal. He can't come home and tell me about his day or what happened in school. What I do know is he's trying to tell us how he feels through his spike in behaviors. My son deserves to be placed in a safe environment that is equipped to handle his behaviors and provide him with a proper education. I'm here to make you aware and ask for your assistance. How could anyone trust a school with the lies, the twisted truths, and the lack of communication that I've been given? Thank you for listening.
And that concludes our public speaking. Thank you, all those that spoke tonight.
At this time, we will move on to employee groups.
Good evening, Dr. McCabe, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Rothstein. I am Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing clericals, LPNs, and assistants across Carroll County Public Schools. There may be some here this evening surprised to see me as I am recovering from right ankle surgery. I have yet to be cleared to drive and live fifty minutes away, but I asked someone to drive me here this evening because of the importance of speaking to you. For most of the past year, I have spoken at some point in my remarks about injuries to members of my bargaining unit. And since the beginning of this school year, I have also spoken about the increase in disruptive student behaviors. Back in October, I shared the following. Every year since the pandemic, staff across our county and the state begin each school year with a positivity and hope that student behaviors will improve. While we understand that there are a myriad of reasons and issues as to why these behaviors exist, it doesn't lessen the impact on staff and the students in our schools. This year, we seem to be seeing the effects of these behaviors earlier than ever before. I have already heard comments from kind, caring, empathetic veteran staff members saying that they are experiencing medical issues such as high blood pressure because of stress, with others saying that they are rethinking their choice to remain in education. I have also heard others say that they no longer look forward to coming to work and know of several who have already been injured, many being in the CASE bargaining unit. As in other counties, we continue to see shortages in staff, even with hiring bonuses in some classifications. Being completely honest, there is a pervasive lack of respect for school staff and our contracted bus drivers from students and family members alike, as well as a lack of pride and respect for our facilities. I stand here this evening, three months later, alongside my CCEA counterparts, making sure that everyone knows that behaviors have continued to deteriorate at an alarming rate and injuries to staff continue to increase. The specialized programs in our school system used to handle the most severe behaviors that occurred in CCPS. Now, those programs are overflowing and schools with and without these programs are dealing with those more severe behaviors in mainstream classrooms every day. More and more classrooms are being evacuated because of student behavior and teachers and support staff across the county are being told to keep these disruptive students out of the halls, in the classroom, and not to do anything to escalate them. When students do escalate, they often return to classrooms and are allowed to take part in what would be seen by many as rewards. What is seen as the lack of consistent and progressive consequences is not conducive to preparing these students for life outside of the school system, causes disturbances for the learning environment for other students, and is incredibly frustrating for staff who bear the brunt of these situations. Instructional assistants in one school were called into a meeting and told that their duties would be shifting from an instructional focus to a behavioral focus. They would no longer primarily be utilized for small groups and interventions. The school focus will now be on first-pass instruction. That move is taking needed educational resources and opportunities away from some of our neediest students. In some instances, staff members find themselves being put in positions and situations where they know there is a good probability that they will be injured. And some of these staff have been injured on consecutive days. One of the members of my bargaining unit suffered two concussions in three weeks. And tonight, unfortunately, in my folder, I have copies and will be leaving them, a picture of another member of our bargaining unit who recently suffered a severe bite on the hand with deep teeth mark impressions from a pre-case student. I wish I could tell you that this is the only injury suffered by this staff member from the same student, but I cannot. As President of CASE, I've been trying to learn more about staff injuries since the spring of last year because of the concern for the members of our bargaining unit and the increases that were occurring. As President, I know that there is a school system policy on reporting any unwanted physical contact with a student, but most employees across the county are not aware of this policy. And even among those who know the policy, the time required to report is a burden on employees who are already stretched thin, so incidents are going undocumented. How can we truly have an accurate accounting of the number of injuries sustained by staff in our county if this policy is not being followed and followed consistently? Some current members of our Board of Education and others in the community have made statements of late about getting back to basics and raising our test scores. Educators in our county would welcome the opportunity to get back to teaching and learning, but how can that happen when entire classrooms are displaced because of one student or there are students who can't be held to academic expectations because of a fear that they will go out of control? A colleague made a statement during a conversation I had recently in reference to the impact on other students in their classes, who are many times displaced because of the behavior of one student in their class. That comment was a kick in the stomach to me, but unfortunately true. She said, "We are creating trauma in children. That statement should concern us all." Educators in our county are at the breaking point. They are exhausted, blatantly disrespected, and some even fear for the safety of themselves and their students. I have personally spoken with some members of my bargaining unit since the return to school after our winter break. These are loyal, highly qualified employees, and all of them I spoke to in that timeframe are either ready to resign before the end of the year or are looking to find a way to transfer to another career at the end of this school year instead of finishing out their career in education because of the circumstances many of them now work under. They find themselves not wanting to go to work every day, and the untenable stress from their jobs is now bleeding into their personal lives as well. In this time of educator shortages, can we really afford to lose these dedicated and talented educators? We are aware there are constraints placed on all of us in the state regarding student behaviors, but how many concussions and other life-impacting injuries are enough? We look back a few years when our state looked to move back to life as the grip of the pandemic was lessening. Carroll County's Board of Education took a stand and had employees back in the building before most, any other county in our state. We need you to take a stand once again, a stand for the staff and students of our county so we can get back to giving our students the education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, board members, and Commissioner. I am Slush Jordan, President of CCA. I stood in support of Cindy Porter. While we are Presidents of two distinct unions in Carroll County, both of us belong to MSEA and NEA. I mention this because I often hear about how teacher unions with a negative connotation. CASE and CCA are part of the same union. CCA's vision statement is, "CCA empowers members to advocate for their professional growth, better salaries, and enhanced working conditions. Collaboratively, we improve the lives of educators, students, and family." As an individual high school math teacher, I was very much concerned about standardized testing and student scores. As union president, I am here to advocate for the members of CCA. The people at the table to my left and to my back right there will tell you, I will have no problem giving suggestions how to improve academic achievement in either of my roles. But understand that as Presidents, Ms. Porter and I are here to advocate for our members. When the educators' needs are met, they can better focus on student needs. For the past year, both Ms. Porter and I have spoken to you about extreme and disruptive student behaviors. Some have suggested this, this behavior simply because we implemented restorative practices. CCPS has not implemented restorative practices with any sort of fidelity. Other counties have fully implemented restorative practices, and really, I don't know how it works for their school. There have been changes to the way discipline is handled, in part due to lawsuits around the state and country. People often ask, "Why aren't students being suspended?" We need to ask if the suspensions would actually change the behavior or solve the problem. We also need to remember this isn't the eighties when I was in school, and if you were suspended, your mom was still at home to make your life miserable. People are working. They can't be at home with a suspended child. The answer as to whether a suspension changes behavior or solves the problem, sometimes is yes, often it's no. Educators need administration to get creative and to find solutions that can occur in the building and keep other sta- students and staff safe, while ensuring each student does receive their free and appropriate public education. I have said before that if a parent hears from their child that there is a behavior issue causing their classroom to be cleared, or if their child is injured by another student, the parents need to talk to administration. And you need to let administration know that you expect a phone call from administration every time your child's class is cleared or your child is injured, from administration. If you do not receive the responses you expect, please move up the ladder to the school directors. On a much lighter note, next month, there will be a presentation about cell phones and last month, an educator clearly expressed the frustrations of educators surrounding electronic devices. I was one of those teachers that did not allow cell phones in class. I consider them a distraction to students and I don't need those distractions and neither do they. When I was allowed to have my own policy and enforce it, my class did pretty well. I didn't catch every violation. I never claimed to, but I was pretty good. And after a few weeks, most students realized it just wasn't worth the detention. I also think that students respected that I was not a hypocrite about cell phones. I've never used my cell phones, my cellphone during class. I explained to students that I cannot do my job if I'm distracted by a phone. I remember students always asking, "But Ms. Jordan, what if my grandmother dies and my parents cannot get in touch with me?" First, no one should be told via text that grandma died. Second, there are phones in the building. Your parents call and call the school and we can support you in that instance. I explained if they were having some sort of issue, talk to me so we can work something out, and I gave them the same respect. When my parents were in hospice, I told students, "My phone is on because I have to hear it ring in case I needed to go be with my parents." Mrs. Herbert has been in one of my classes and she can attest to the academic focus in my room. I tell you all this because I would like to issue a bit of a challenge to you all. We want students to ignore their phones while in school. Shouldn't we be willing to model the behavior we are expecting? I was. Is the Board of Education willing to put your cell phones away at the next Board of Ed meeting? I believe this would send a powerful message to students and the community. Please don't feel like you have to respond tonight. It's just something to think about. Again, modeling the behavior we wish to see. The first minister is coming to an end. I hope all the students and educators finish strong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did-
I'm not approaching the day as I'm going over here. Cindy wants this passed to you all.
And I did, I did visit Ms. Jordan's classroom on several occasions and it was an unbelievable classroom. And Ms. Jordan, a parent, did text a child one time and told him the grandfather passed away. That has happened in Carroll County Public- That has happened in Carroll County public schools.
We'll wait a couple minutes before we continue our meeting, so there's no more further disruptions. If you are leaving, please try quietly.
We'll give it a minute here.
All right, Ms. Jordan, which one of us had our cellphone in our hand?
I'm not going to call people out. I mean, if you'd be in my classroom, some of you would have an hour after-school detention.
And that's true.
Yep.
I saw her in operation.
Did Gary leave?
All right. Okay. Ms. Pataglia, we have one announcement.
Yes. It is National School Counselors Week. I'm sorry, it's not, this is not National School Counselors Week. National School Counselors Week will be celebrated on February 5th through February 9th. This year's theme is School Counseling: Standards-Based Student-Focused. This week, the week will highlight the positive impact school counselors have in helping our students achieve success in school and planning for our career. We have a tremendous counseling program and appreciate the many dedicated and talented school counselors in our school system. And I will say, yes, our, our school counselors are phenomenal. They go above and beyond, and they try to juggle a lot in our schools, so I, I am appreciative of all of our school counselors.
Thank you. At this time, we have board member activities, and we're going to start with Mr. Whistler tonight. Going to start to the right tonight.
I thought it was ladies first, but I'll be happy to start. I hope everyone had a terrific holiday season and a happy new year. I'm looking forward to working alongside all of my board colleagues and staff to deliver even better results for students in 2024. On December 16th, I was honored to be selected by my Lions Club to lay a wreath in remembrance of U.S. Navy veterans at the Wreaths Across America event in Sykesville. In fact, Commissioner Rothstein emceed the event. It was terrific seeing so many students attend this event to remember and honor the memories of our servicemen and women. Our ROTC unit from Century High School provided an honor guard for the event, and they were flawless. They really made me so proud. On December 18th, I participated in our CCPS budget work session. I really do appreciate the staff doing everything they can to make what we do more efficient, purposeful, and less expensive for taxpayers. We do have very difficult times ahead with regards to our budget, and I know everyone's working hard to get it done. I attended the CCPS staff Christmas party on December 20th. I appreciate the continued support of First Financial Federal Credit Union to support our educators and the event. And once again, our culinary arts students at the Career and Tech Center did a phenomenal job catering the event. I believe it was them that catered it, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the food was amazing. On January 2nd, I attended a legislative kickoff event with our state delegation at Carroll Hospital. I know our representatives will work very hard, as they usually do, to bring back vital resources we need for schools and other priorities that serve our neighbors in every corner of Carroll. They are committed to helping us retain local control on curriculum issues and blueprint implementation, and I feel we're all on the same page. On January 8th, along with my colleagues, I met with our Board of Commissioners. I really do appreciate the frank discussion we had on where we all sit financially. I'm very encouraged by the notion that our governor, many state representatives, and our local leaders all agree that we must seek responsible changes within blueprint that delivers a world-class education in a fiscally responsive manner. As a Board of Education member, I'll always advocate for our schools, but I also realize that our commissioners cannot divert every dollar they have to us. They have many other priorities they must fund, like public safety, roads and highways, land preservation, and our public libraries. We cannot expect them to shortchange those very important services to implement every facet of blueprint. Later that day, on January 8th, I attended the Maryland Association Boards of Education Federal Advocacy Committee meeting. Many of our MAE committee members will meet with members of Congress at the end of the month to advocate for our schools. And finally, yesterday, January 9th, I attended two events. The first was the State of County presentation by our commissioners at the Carroll Arts Center, and I later stopped by the Carroll County Career and Tech Center later that morning to participate in their Building Construction and Trades Fair. Dozens of small businesses in Maryland and Pennsylvania were there to work alongside our educators to help students plan their future. Many students passed along their resumes and filled out job applications. I'm so proud of the teamwork and collaboration of our small businesses and educators to get our students interested in a career after their high school experience. Their collaboration and teamwork are what sets Carroll County apart from other school districts in Maryland.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Herbert. For my activities on December 16th, I also participated in a National Wreaths Across America Day event. I was at the site of the historic Western Chapel Cemetery. And at that ceremony, again, it was really focused on honoring the memory of the fallen soldiers, the veterans who are buried there. And that particular cemetery is meaningful to me because I once lived in the neighborhood. In fact, my husband grew up right across the road from this particular cemetery. So we are just very grateful to the local Lions Club and the Boy Scouts troop that provided a very meaningful ceremony as we participated in National Wreaths Across America. On the 18th of December, I as well attended our budget work session. On the 20th, we have some of the same things going here. I too was at our holiday party for our central office staff, and I'm just very grateful to our culinary students at the Career and Technology Center for preparing the delicious food, and we're grateful to all the staff who planned the annual event and for Dr. McCabe really acknowledging and thanking our, our staff members for their hard work thus far during the school year. On January 2nd, I also attended the legislative kickoff with our delegation, with our delegates and senators, and information was shared about what to expect in various areas during this new legislative session. On January 4th, I began attending meetings that are a part of the Design Development Planning Committee for all of our pre-K and K additions that we have planned. We've started having these Design Development Committee meetings. So on the 4th, it was the meeting for the pre-K and K addition at Friendship Valley, which also is getting a prod addition, and it was for Tawny Town Elementary for their pre-K and K as well. On January 8th, again, the joint meeting with our county commissioners, and we're grateful that our leadership team shared information about our fiscal year 2025 budget and the blueprint initiatives. And on that afternoon, I had another Design Development Planning Committee. This time, it was for the pre-K and K classrooms at Sandy Mount Elementary. And on yesterday, again, we had our State of Our County address in which the county commissioner shared information. Later that day, I attended the MAE Conference Program Committee Planning Meeting. I met with the MAE staff member and the conference committee co-chair so that we can plan our agenda for the very first meeting of our Conference Program Committee. And I ended yesterday by attending another Design Development Planning Committee meeting. This time, it was for the addition at Cranberry Station. And I thank Mr. Marx and, I'm trying, Mr. Kane, I'm sorry, for, again, chairing and having those meetings. And it's just real interesting when you see the whole process that you go through before you actually have an addition added or placed on a school. So again, I, and I'm very grateful to all of the, the staff members, especially the teachers, because I think they really had the most input as far as what they want their spaces to look like. So it's been a very busy time, but very productive time.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia.
First, I want to say to Mr. Foote, I, I remember the, the pool that's on the fourth floor at Westminster High School. I'm still waiting for that one, too, but that was always something I had to handle with, was ever Westminster, as a student, and I think it's still a joke there, too. So a couple of things, you know, over the holidays, I spent some time with my family and friends. We hosted Christmas Eve and Christmas, so I was really happy to, to have some of my family around. My stepdaughter, who currently lives outside of London, an hour outside of London in Europe, in England, she is a teacher, and she has her master's degree, and we were discussing some of the things. And she was even saying that even there, that some of the issues that they're having is the behaviors in their schools, and she teaches like the middle school level, and she's a math teacher. And I was like, "Well, you know, I know mom, your mom and your dad and your grandparents would be so happy to have you home." Like, you know, "How much do you make?" She was like, "Thirty thousand." I was like, "What? What?" And she's like, "Thirty thousand a year." I said, "That's it? That's all?" She was like, "Well, yeah." And I was like, "No, come home. Like, I'm, the state has money to pay you. Like, we're looking for teachers," and, but she, she's happy there. But it was incredible how they still are saying, you know, she was even saying some of the issues that they have there and that we are having here, too, with student behaviors and everything. So, but yeah, that, that really threw me when I heard she only makes thirty thousand a year, and she was happy with that. And I'm like, "What? No." Sorry. I am continuing my college classes, and I am on pace to graduate December 2024, so I am very excited that that is coming up. And it'll be here before we know it, you know? It's, it seems to just fly by. So a couple upcoming things we have coming up is a Career and Technology Center ceremonies for certifications. We have our CAC meeting. Couple events from that have occurred around the community. We had beef weigh-ins the other day, so if anybody did happen to see the article in the Cary Cary Times, you know, they discussed about, this is the time of year that 4-Hers bring the beef animals that they're going to be selling and hopefully selling at the 4-H Fair in July and August this year, and that this is their first initial weigh-ins, and it teaches them a lot on how to care for the animal and keep pace on making sure that they don't go over a specific weight that they need to have for, for 4-H Fairs. And speaking of 4-H, signups are coming up, so you have the 4-H signups have opened up, so make sure you, if interested in 4-H, look into the clubs. And, you know, I think all of us have had discussions with many of our delegates regarding some things, and I know one thing we, we have heard from the delegates is there is bipartisan support to look at some of the juvenile laws and some of the behavior issues in education. And I, and I appreciate our delegates taking it down to Annapolis and hearing from other delegates in the county, too, that, you know, around the state, what they're hearing as well, so, so we can hopefully make sure those items are addressed, they need to be.
Thank you. This is a big meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Herbert. I'm going to keep my comments very short because most of the, the things that I had attended have already been discussed several times, but just wanted to wish everyone, I'm so, I'm so hopeful that everyone had a restful, wonderful holiday season and Happy New Year to everyone. So, so thankful to our employees and all of our staff, and, you know, it's been, it's been an interesting week from a weather perspective as well, so thank you to everyone for, you know, responding so well this week. And I, I just did want to say with the commissioner meeting that took place on Monday, I, you know, I'm very sorry that I was not able to make that with the, with the quick change in the timing. I was not able to rearrange my work schedule, but I was able to watch the commissioner meeting last night, so I am up to speed on all of the comments that were made and the discussions that were had. And I just want to say to Commissioner Rothstein, you know, thank you so much for the commissioners and remaining partners in all of this blueprint activity and budget concerns and everything that's going on at, at the county level. We truly appreciate the partnership and look forward to the, the discussions that we're going to have later on this evening. And I also want to thank the speakers that came in today. We had a wide variety of topics and just so thankful for everyone who comes to speak up and bring the concerns and issues to the board so that we can make sure that those are being addressed. With that, I will pass it.
All right. Ms. Sudacar.
Hello, everyone. On December 16th, I attended the Maryland Youth Advisory Council Community Conversation, featuring some really great discussions on improving communities from students across the state. On January 2nd, I also attended the Carroll County Legislative Kickoff. I'm very excited to see the start of legislative session for the upcoming Maryland General Assembly. Yesterday, on January 9th, we held our first CCSGA meeting of the year, reviewing feedback on the last general assembly and planning the one to come. The next CCSGA General Assembly is very important. The February General Assembly is where the primary election for the student representative on the Board of Education occurs. This is where the top two candidates are narrowed down, deciding who will move on to the general election. This is a reminder to all students that applications for Schrob are due on January 26th. We can't wait to see the amazing candidates, and Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. I would like to take this time to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I hope you all had the opportunity to relax, recharge, and spend much time with your family and friends. We do look ahead for 2024. We have a lot to accomplish. Last week, along with everyone here, we attended the Legislative Kickoff sponsored by the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce, and of course, we listened to our delegation with their goals and their priorities for the year Monday. And I do appreciate these. We met with our county commissioners for the first joint meeting of the year, and Ms. Andy is already getting ready to set up our next quarterly meeting, but we need to do this in a timely fashion, and we do need to work together. And we worked together to finish the budget last year, and we will continue to have that open dialogue and communication between the two boards, and we continue to look forward to that in 2024. We all attended the State of the County yesterday, and there were a lot of people there yesterday. That, that Art Center was packed, more so than last year. And we listened to the county commissioners discuss where we are and where we're going in the new year. And as we move forward, we have many priorities and challenges, but our biggest are the budget and blueprint. It is imperative that we have a budget that meets the needs of our students and our educators, and that we are able to meet challenges and mandates. And I said mandates, associated with blueprint. And again, best wishes for 2024. And now, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. I'd like to begin this evening by congratulating Michael Schweinberg, welding instructor at the Carroll County Career and Technology Center, who has been nominated for the 2024 Associated Builders and Contractors Craft Instructor, Instructor of the Year Award. This award is presented to an instructor who possesses outstanding creativity, a positive attitude, and the ability to transfer knowledge through communication skills and innovative teaching to promote lifelong learning to the future construction workforce. This nomination gives him the distinction of being one of the top three craft instructors in the nation. And now, I would like to congratulate our high school student athletes and coaches for a very successful fall season. South Carroll Golf head coach Matt Joseph won the 2A/1A state championship after finishing second in 2022. The Cavaliers finished 25 strokes better than runner-up Poolsville High School, the 2022 champions. This is the first state title for South Carroll after runner-up finishes in 2014 and 2022. South Carroll Field Hockey head coach Kayla Holston avenged a state finals loss to Pokomoke in 2022 with a 2-1 victory in the 2023 title game rematch. This is the sixth state title for South Carroll and the first since 2018. Liberty Boys Cross Country head coaches Ryan and Trent Rose won the 1A state championship in commanding fashion, finishing 106 points ahead of runner-up Smithsburg. This is the eighth championship for the Lions and the first since 2018. Additionally, two individual runners won championships at the state cross-country meet. Liberty Junior Greg Shelberg won the 1A boys' race in a time of 16 minutes 35 seconds, winning by 26 seconds. In the 2A girls' race, Century freshman Taylor Colson took the individual title with a time of 18 minutes 51 seconds, finishing 2.5 seconds ahead of the second-place runner. We are very proud of these outstanding athletes and coaches. And speaking of coaches, four of our coaches were selected as two- And speaking of coaches, four of our coaches were selected as 2022, 2023 NFHS Maryland State Coaches of the Year for their respective sports. Congratulations to Shelley Brzicki, Manchester Valley Girls Lacrosse, Tim Brecker, Liberty Girls Tennis, Brian Tomes, Liberty Boys Basketball, and Brian is now the Athletic Director at Westminster High School, and Chris Basler, Westminster Football. Additionally, Shelley Brzicki was selected as the Section 2 NFHS Girls Lacrosse Coach of the Year. Section 2 comprises Pennsylvania, Delaware, Maryland, Virginia, West Virginia, Kentucky, Ohio, and Washington DC. And finally, I would like to wish everyone a happy and healthy new year. This is a great time for a fresh start and to celebrate all that our students and staff have achieved in the past year and look ahead to the successes and challenges that lie ahead.
Thank you. And I was lucky enough to be invited to the South Carroll Breakfast of Champions. So that was, that was a very nice affair. And at this time, we were supposed to have a blueprint update, but the bill did not drop.
Yes. So we had planned to present tonight and we had placed on the agenda the item in anticipation of the timing of the opening of the General Assembly. We thought at this point that some blueprint-related legislation might have been introduced as prefiled bills. If so, we wanted to reserve the time to share any important updates. But no bills have yet been filed, so we don't have a presentation for that this evening. But the following is our plan for our future presentations in the upcoming months. In February, we will have a presentation on our cell phone use in the schools. In March, we will have the blueprint presentation that we hoped to present tonight, as well as probably some other details that we'll be able to share at that time. And then in April, staff will present on our state star ratings, which we have gotten in.
Okay. Ms. Sevigney, do you?
Yes, Dr. McCabe, I just had a quick question for you. Is that concerning at all that none of the bills have dropped related to the blueprint?
No. No.
That none of them were prefiled? I think it's...
Not, not, not really at all. So just the thought that they might be prefiled. So we wanted the placeholder because we have to set the agenda ahead of time, but not, not concerning that we didn't see anything.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
All right. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I think you're on.
Okay. Just real quick, just want to share that although they weren't prefiled, Mako, Maryland Association Counties, both Commissioner Kyler and I are both on the Education Subcommittee. I'll be facilitating it, but want to ensure he's on it. So anything that does come about with education with the blueprint from this, because they just opened today, the session just started, we'll make sure you know what's happening. So, okay.
And we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then at this time, we will move on to the Construction Report.
For the monthly construction report, I wanted to highlight two items. The HVAC replacement projects for Mount Airy Elementary School and Oklahoma Road Middle School. Both projects were submitted for bid and the award of bids are on the agenda later this evening. Continuing a trend we began to see with the awards for the Career and Tech Center and East Middle School projects, the bid results show that escalation or inflation in the construction market is continuing to move ahead of earlier budget estimates. With the Career and Tech Center and East Middle projects, we were able to get those projects in just as the construction market began to go up. Both of these projects came in overbid to a combined total of 3.3 million. We are not alone in this experience of inflation in the construction market. Other school systems are confronting the same situation as well as other sectors of the construction market. Our team has worked on the reality of where the bid market landed with staff at both the County and the Interagency Commission on School Construction, the IAC, and has found agreeable funding solutions for all parties. Therefore, it is my recommendation that these projects move forward with you approving the award of bids later this evening. Pending that action, when we adopt the operating budget in May, we will also bring, bring final CIP project amounts for your approval. These two projects will be adjusted to reflect the new project totals from both the county and the state. We also considered alternatives, but do not find any to be viable. We believe the projects are important and need to move forward. Delaying the projects would push not only these projects, but those behind them in the queue further into the out years, and we know costs will escalate. I'm concerned that rebidding would not yield more favorable bid outcomes and would delay the projects as we will have lost the lead time needed in order to obtain equipment and materials. Questions?
Ms. Sevigney?
Mr. Marx is here, of course.
Yes, come on up, Mr. Marx, please.
Dr. McCabe, I just want to thank you for, for all of that background. I think that's really helpful for us to understand in making that decision on the award of bids tonight. And I, I believe when, when we looked at the EMFP a while back before the CIP development, those two projects, the HVAC projects, they are beyond their useful lifetime, correct? I mean, they, they do need to be updated in short order. So delaying would only be a bad thing from, from multiple perspectives.
Yes. And if you remember the beginning of this school year, the problems we had with the chiller, chillers at Oklahoma Road exacerbates the need to really get this going and keep it moving.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks.
I did just want to make one additional comment. So after all the questions that we had asked about the, the East Middle Rock issue last month, I just want to thank you for, for reaching out to Commissioner Kyler, making sure that, you know, everybody was on the same page and on board.
No problem.
He, he told me that you had reached out to him very quickly, so thank you for doing that.
No problem. My pleasure. Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion for the approval of appointments by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia.
I am recommending two appointments for you this evening, both of which address an upcoming retirement. Kelly May from Reading Specialist at Elmer Wolf Elementary to Acting Assistant Principal at Elmer Wolf. And then Christina Shepherd from Assistant Principal at Elmer Wolf Elementary to Acting Principal at Elmer Wolf Elementary.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of personnel action items.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by, by Ms. Sevigney.
For the monthly personnel actions, there are eight new hires, two broken contracts, and two leaves of absence.
Questions? And I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And now I need a motion for 6C, approval of revision of policy IIIAA section, selection, evaluation, adoption of instructional materials. So moved by Mr. Whistler, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigney.
Last month, revisions to policy IIIAA, selection, evaluation, and adoption of instructional materials were presented for discussion. The revisions were then submitted for public comment, which has been summarized for you. The revised policy now returns for your action. Mr. Shockney is available for any discussion.
Ms. Sudakar.
So we've heard a lot from the community and we've heard a lot from public comments recently. And what I'm seeing is although, and I've also heard a lot from students on this policy as well. One thing that I, last meeting, I made sure to ask a few questions regarding how this policy is written and how this policy is stated currently. I still feel that there is no true way to completely standardize the way that we conclude what ambiguous and unambiguous means. And one person, one person's version of graphic is not the same as another, making the way this policy, the way it's currently written ineffective in its intention, which I truly understand the intention, which is to protect students, to protect students from sexually explicit content. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Whistler.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President. Few months ago, I moved that we review policy IIIAA and restrict student access to supplemental materials with explicit and graphic sexual content. Then I appreciated the unanimous support of my colleagues. I really do appreciate the staff's current recommendations and I urge my colleagues on the board to adopt this new policy today. I struggle to discern which is more disturbing. The fact that our system spent tax dollars to purchase and provide children access to this content. It's frankly very embarrassing. Or that a small fraction of members in this community think that the presence of graphic sexual content somehow benefits students. There is no academic value in providing children access to books with explicit sexual content that goes into graphic and textual detail of sexual activity. None. It won't raise a single SAT score. It won't help a student discern an ideal career path or technical trade, and it won't help a single student get a job after high school. This policy does not target specific authors, themes, topics, or genre. It merely provides our educators with guidance on what is not appropriate for our students. This policy does not ban books. Instead, it provides responsible standards that our superintendent should consider if needed to restrict student access to inappropriate content. Let me be clear. As an elected official, I will not tolerate a single penny of taxpayer funds being used to purchase content with graphic and/or explicit sexual content. I urge every employee in our school system to focus on being an educator, stick to curriculum, and jettison any notion that they should be the arbiter of what level of sexual content a student should be exposed. It is the job of parents, not educators or any government entity, to decide how much sexual content is appropriate for their children. Now let's get back to educating students and ensure we keep Carol one of the best in academic performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whistler. Ms. Pataglia.
You know, I appreciate that, you know, this was developed. But as our student rep said, I think there can be a level of what, what one person sees as sexual content and explicit versus another. And a lot of that can be based on religion, too. Depending upon someone's religious beliefs, which those don't stop when you walk into a school, the school, you know, I mean, you could walk into a school library and those things don't end though. I mean, I, I, I personally, I would like to see in like a little more detail as to what exactly, like, what it mean. I think that's, that's personally what I would like to see because it, it can be left up for someone to see something defined differently than someone else. And I agree, sexually explicit material should not be in our schools as far as reading material outside of curriculum base, like family life. But I do think there, there is, there is probably that, that little line that might be, might be drawn of, you know, what someone sees versus another. I mean, I don't know if there's any federal law guidance or potentially rating guidance that we could look at to, to implement in some way of, as, as a defined in it, some, some purpose? I don't know. That's just kind of like where I'm thinking.
Ms. Sevigney.
I just wanted to thank staff for, for bringing, putting this forth in front of us. And I also want to thank our legal folks who also had input into this definition. I think the intent is clear. And I think that this is a reasonable definition in order to define our intent for a policy purpose. So I am definitely in support of this and I think we should move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Sudakar.
My original concern with this has always been, I don't want this to be seen as a, as something that's, I know it when I see it. That's something that I'm concerned about when we standardize the way that we view sexually explicit content. Because that does indeed mean something different to everyone else in the way that they read a book. We have seen so many works of classic literature include parts of content that may be considered sexually explicit to some, but are ambiguous to another. And with this policy, what I'm worried is that we're going to lose some very important content in our schools because a single line is taken out of context and isn't necessarily on the verge of ambiguous or unambiguous. In order to make sure that we fulfill the duty that we have to ensure students have the best education possible, I fully believe that we need to find a way to specifically standardize what we define sexually explicit acts, because I do not believe that this policy does in its current state.
Any other comments? Dr. Dorsey.
Just following up on what our student has said, I think that's some of what we had gotten from the community as well, that the definition, some feel is a bit too broad or vague. So I'm not sure whether you've taken another look at whether there's anything more that can be done with that or not. But I, I do think we need to go back to the beginning and certainly share that this is in no, by no means any way to censor books or to ban books. That's not what we're dealing with here. We're just looking at material that's in books, you know, that is of a sexual nature. And we've tried to define it as, define it as best we could by, you know, the definition that you've put forth here. But again, it's not about banning books or, or censoring books. And we know what it is like whenever we take anything out of context. When you take something out of context, you know, one person can make it mean one thing and another person can say it means something else, but you really do have to put it in the full content, you know, that, that it's, it's referencing or a part of. So again, my concern would be to follow up as well to say, you know, if there's anything more, we can deal with the definition so that there's just, you know, no, no mistake about what is men concerning it.
Hence the difficulty. I, I serve at your pleasure, at your direction. I can make whatever changes or...
And I thank you because this is, this has been a difficult task for you and everyone else that has assisted you in the progress of this policy. And I thank you and our legal group also. So no other comments? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Just student rep. Okay. Then it passes five out with student rep.
Thank you.
No, thank you. All right. And now I need a motion for the approval of award of bids. By Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Mr. Whistler. Thank you.
Okay. There are four items on the award of bids this evening. The first is the contract award for the HVAC replacement project at Mount Airy Elementary. This and the next item are the two projects we discussed earlier in the monthly construction report. Next, the contract award for the HVAC replacement project at Oklahoma Road Middle. Third is an annual contract for nursing services when those services are required as part of a student's transportation. And finally, a commodity list for musical instruments as needed for the next school year, or for the, for next year.
Ms. Sevigney.
Thank you. Dr. McCabe, I had one quick question about the Maxim Healthcare Services. Have we, have we used that service before? Is this a service that we've been using?
Yes.
Yes, we've, yes, we've had to.
Okay. Okay. So it's just a continuation of the vendor that we've been using?
We know, we know with that vendor, yeah.
Yes. Okay. That's all I had.
That's it. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And now we will move on to the Superintendent's Proposed It passes unanimously, and now we will move on to the superintendent's proposed 2024-25 budget.
Tonight, we continue with the annual operating budget process. We held the work session and had discussion on December 18th, and we also covered these highlights again this week in the joint meeting with the commissioners. Continuing with the process, at the January board meeting this evening, I must present my proposed FY25 budget as a discussion item. Following this evening, the proposed budget will be released for public comment. We will also hold a public budget hearing at the end of this month. Then, at your February meeting, you will approve an FY25 operating budget request, which is then submitted to the commissioners for consideration in their annual budget process. Although there are no major changes from the work session, I'd like for Mr. Burke to remind us of the major items, and we can then discuss the budget or the process with you. Lastly, I would remind us that the General Assembly opened today, which means we will all receive the governor's FY25 budget one week from today. That will help clarify the anticipated state revenue for FY25. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. Good evening, board members. As superintendent mentioned, I'll run briefly through the slideshow. Very little change, a few clarifications from the last time you saw it, but no significant changes. So if I can get it right, here we go. So, sort of a summary of our expected net change from our current fiscal year '24 budget to our fiscal year '25 proposed. Our estimate of state revenue increase due to both enrollment growth and the programmed increase in the blueprint funding at 7.8 million. Again, that's hopefully to be revised with some additional data over the next week or two. I'll run through more detail, but the bottom line will be our county revenue request at 17.9 million. We'll talk a bit more about that. A few things that have been identified for fund balance use in this proposed budget, and then there will be some additional things we may consider before we get to final adoption later in the year. And the upward adjustment due to rising interest rates on our investments, providing a little supplemental income there. A total sort of new revenue available of 27.4 million. Touched on that already, the, the program blueprint increases, the enrollment, and as mentioned before, a significant challenge is that some, some significant costs of the blueprint are kicking in in '25, but through whatever process led to it, a very minimal increase in, in state funding, about 1.7% increase in our state funding formula, so creating some challenge there.
Excuse me, and that's a biggie, and people need to know that. That should have an asterisk beside it, because that is the least amount in the years now, now and now, so.
So they provided some funding ramping up. We see some significant increases coming over the next five to six years, but for whatever reason, fiscal year '25, a very small state revenue increase relative to the new costs that will begin picking up.
Yes, and that hurts.
Mentioned the, again, the local, our request from the county in the last year's adoption of their operating plan, programmed in about $7.1 million for fiscal year '25, and with our needs identified at 17.9 million, 10.8 million over that request. I'm sure that'll be the topic of many conversations to come in the next several months. A breakdown of the cost increases driving our request of a total of 27.4 million, the inflationary impacts, primarily ongoing needs for operating the schools, so utilities, insurance, some of the employee and retiree benefits seeing significant cost pressures. So just as many households and businesses seeing inflationary pressure on a school system. The blueprint requirements, the 700,000 is primarily the college and career readiness component of the blueprint, the dual enrollment, NAP testing that, that we're funding. This is sort of catching up to the costs that we're really already kind of seeing in fiscal year '24, and now have a little better handle on what our total cost obligation will be. Some additional costs in our special ed programs, contract services, and some staffing required to meet services.
Mr. Burke, we have a question.
Sure, yes, sir.
Again, I appreciate, not really a question, but just a clarification for our audience who may be tuning in. I've received a couple of emails from constituents saying, wow, only 700,000 of your budget's going to blueprint requirements. It's really important to mention that the employee, you know, the salaries on the previous slide, was it like 19.7 million, I think at the bottom of the glass?
At the bottom there.
But a lot, that 19.7 million is also a definite target towards meeting blueprint requirements with regards to getting our teachers to 60K minimum. So I don't want the public to think that only 700,000 of this 27 million is for blueprint.
Right.
A large portion of these funds are for us to meet blueprint mandates.
Sure.
So, thank you.
So the 700,000 is one program in particular. That's not the total cost of the program, that's our net change versus what we've already budgeted in the current year as we project costs for next year. But to your point, the blueprint shows up in many categories. There, there isn't just a category blueprint. So good point there. Transportation driven by the, some increases in the formula and in projected fuel costs. We've discussed that. The netting out of last year's fund balance, which was primarily infrastructure renewal for us. We'll talk more about that as we get deeper into our budget process and the opportunity for maybe identifying some more uses of fund balance heading into adoption. We'll bring some more information for that. The technology component has already gotten some discussion, and, and that will continue. Certainly a challenge as we really, for the first year, now begin to look at the costs of the renewal program, primarily of the one-on-one devices. So certainly an area we can talk about more, what's the right timing, what's the right cycle, but there's a looming significant cost out there. And then, as was mentioned, the significant cost driver of our, you know, something upwards of 80-plus percent of the school system's budget represents staffing and personnel costs in a inflationary market of salaries, along with the challenges the blueprint presents to start to make effort toward the 60,000 for teachers and other blueprint requirements. Obviously, a large number and a big driver on our budget, and we'll get lots of additional discussion and attention as we move forward. Kind of lays out the details I just walked through there, just hitting the highlights. It's kind of what I walked through as we were speaking there. You know, this is our efforts to put together a budget that will meet our needs. It's not a complete wish list of all needs. There, as in any year, there are many other items that could be or, or we would like to see be done, and priorities that the superintendent has, that choices need to be made. So as, as any year, there are choices already made, there's more choices to be made, some of the areas not included. Additional blueprint rollout over the next several years of the planning requirements for teachers that will exceed our capacity to cover and require additional teachers to be able to cover those, that planning time. Additional pre-K is programmed in going forward. This begins some significant end to what's been significant federal grant funds for us for the last several years. Something in the neighborhood of 63 or so staff positions are funded by grant funding that will end over this fiscal year. So, you know, as is often the case, when the money's there, that provides a nice service. When it goes away, it confronts you with that choice or that tough decision of, do you continue it with local dollars or just let it run its course that the funding required? So in this budget, it contemplates those positions, positions going away. Certainly, we believe our staffing levels will allow us to do a significant amount of placement of, of staff into other roles. We certainly hope not to...
That, that was my point there. It was like, and they also knew, I hope, that when they were hired, they knew that when you get, when you're hired by grant money, it's not a guarantee. But we need, we have a lot of positions that are opening, open that I hope that we can absorb the majority of those, because we need teachers, we need aides, we need a little bit of everything, school bus drivers, custodians. So we are not cutting their ties, and when they were hired, they knew that was, that was grant money. So I just didn't, so, we, we're hoping to absorb all of them, yes. So I just want to make sure of that.
So this is sort of a, a starting point, making the decision. From that, we'll be, we'll be evaluating and coming out with communication and processes out of human resources to determine how we will begin to place people. So this will, this will take some time and ask for some patience as we work through it, but that's certainly our hope. Mentioned in the past, some areas that aren't built into our ongoing budget baseline, so technology and security and some of the maintenance and vehicles. Over the last decade or so, we've generally used either year-end surplus or some planned fund balance in the next year to be able to accomplish that. This continues that practice, and again, we'll be looking for some opportunities to address our highest priorities. And, and as in any year, additional needs, additional staffing, additional programs that have been considered or recommended in the past, I would say this budget does not contemplate any significant new programs that, that we've talked about as priorities in the past. I'd also mention this budget does not include any new FDE, any new staffing. There's some transfers between restricted and, and non-restricted, but no net new positions. Kind of shift gears unless there's any other comments or questions there, and we can certainly circle back. We've, we've talked and mentioned this in the past, our fund balance sits about midpoint of our range, so it's healthy but available for some needs, but in a good, healthy position, about 3% of our budget in fund balance available. There was some discussion, so I laid out the, some of the baseline things that we generally keep that minimum 1% for, weren't for any overages in utilities or transportation or employee health. That's sort of the savings account there, that cushion available with the 5% cap with our agreement with the county. So we continue to manage that. I'd say it's right about on course with where it's been over the last year or two. So as I mentioned, about 800,000 with rounding there that is included, some transportation funding and the career readiness funding. A few items, as I've said before, that we may consider over, as we get deeper into the budget process, would be investments one time in either security or technology or other infrastructure type items. And as we mentioned, also potentially looking at the opportunity to acquire a facility, and if so, we'd be talking about that later in the year with some fund balance money, I think. So we mentioned the next steps, discussion and additional items certainly tonight, the board has, and we'll be releasing the budget book with significantly more detail than this presentation goes into. That'll be available on our website and electronically tomorrow and share, you know, with our stakeholders and so forth. Looking forward to the budgets, the governor's budget release next week and the analysis that'll come out following that. I think Mr. O'Neal had mentioned, there's some new process available to us and how we're estimating that state revenue number. This will kind of start to show us if that was, worked well, or if not, how we can continue to tweak it, and so we'll await that. So we'll have that published and the public's opportunity to look at that and make comment at our public hearing on January 31st, 6:00 PM, and then a work session for the board following that, leading into our February board meeting, where we'll come back with any changes that come out of that and be ready to adopt our budget and funding requests to the county. And then, obviously, some more discussion and, and process after that heading into, potentially, as we come to resolution, as the county works through their process, to either hold a work session or be ready to adopt sometime around the May meeting. So that's sort of the next upcoming pieces, and that ends the presentation. I'm available if there's any other questions or...
All right. Does anybody have any questions before Ms. Savigny takes the podium? Because I know how this works. Okay. The only thing I'm going to state is that you have employee salaries, negotiations, and career ladder. They all work together, and that's why we are asking, for why we're asking. We've worked together with the commissioners before, every year. That's what Donna and I ran on many years ago, and we continue to do that. But now, our highway has changed, and now we have the blueprint. We did not have a career ladder, and we did not have a mandatory 60,000, that's the law now. So we would rather get there sooner and later, save money, and get this accomplished for our educators. So I just want to make sure that we are just not throwing money out the window. We are trying to accomplish what the state wants us to do, and it is going to be a difficult task, and we will work together with commissioners. That's the only way we can get anything done, but I just wanted to make sure that now we have negotiations, we have a salary, and now we have a career ladder, and we have to get it all completed. So bear with us. Ms. Savigny may take the floor. And I thought that was appropriate. Didn't you all think so?
Thank you, Mrs. Herbert. And I, I just did want to make some additional comments since I wasn't able to join the, the meeting on Monday. I do truly appreciate the partnership with the commissioners. You know, you've been in this, in this fight, in this struggle with us from, from the beginning, and I, I want to thank you for really coming through in a big way last year with the 6 million over the, the planned budget. And, you know, we continue to be in this situation, you know, for several years now, or several years to come. There has been some flexibility, or at least in anticipation of flexibility, added to the blueprint implementation requirements. And I'm concerned about an ask to the commissioners of, you know, the budget plus 11 million or plus 10.8 million, because you, you guys were pretty clear in laying it out on Monday with the current budget situation is, and, you know, the hole that you're already in for this fiscal year, and, and that would put you in an even bigger hole to the tune of 17.3 million next year, right? So we appreciate you just being so open and transparent in these discussions. I, I do have concerns with the ask, the additional ask of 10.8 million because of that situation, and I think that it's incumbent upon us, we really need to think very creatively, right? Like, if the flexibility that has been, or that we anticipate having as part of blueprint, we need to be able to utilize that to the fullest extent, right? We don't necessarily want to ramp up our baseline too fast if we don't have to, right? Because we need to make incremental improvements from there. So I, I just would ask that we, we think as creatively as possible. I know that we added a lot of positions last year because of the additional money, you know, and we were, we were at that point trying to fill the compensatory, like, make strides towards filling the compensatory ed bucket. Is, is there a way to maybe claw some of that back to reposition it into... Is, is there a way to maybe claw some of that back to reposition it into salary, you know, so that our baseline in 2025 would be a little bit different moving forward? Just throwing it out there as some possible ideas, you know, that there's, just trying to work with the commissioners, because I, like, again, I appreciate them entertaining the conversation and truly being partners with us. But I think that we need to show that we're doing everything in our power to do the due diligence and utilize the flexibility that we think may be there.
Sure.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And Mago, Maryland Association of Counties, again, sent a letter to our governor and to the delegation, not the delegation, the Senate and the House, outlining the concerns that we all across Maryland have with the implementation and the mandates of the blueprint. Not saying that the blueprint is not warranted, not saying that the blueprint is wrong in any way. However, the timeline associated and the funding of these mandates does not allow us to do the things necessary, and that's across the entire state. The counties are being creative, you know, our neighboring counties are being creative. We're trying to be creative on how to get there. Some creativeness has to do with taxes, which we don't like, you know, at this point. You know, the three taxes that we control are property income and recordation. And we are working very hard to be conservative on those taxes, you know, and dealing with that. The reality is that we are going into FY '25 in a $6.5 million hole, and that's with what's already in the budget, as you shared, not the additional $10.8. That would just increase that much more. And you're the first, you know, out of the gate saying this is an additional dollar amount that's requested. We haven't heard from anyone else yet, the sheriff, the state's attorney, the library, our own facilities, our own workforce. We're always at an 8%, give or take, you know, delta when it comes to our own workforce. So how are we going to be creative that way? You know, adds to the dollar amounts. So I do appreciate your concerns. They are absolutely our concerns as well, and I think working together, continuing just like we did last year, what are the priorities of priorities? You know, what is the must-haves, what are the wants, what are, you know, and then really get it down to where we say, okay, instead of the $10.8, it may be X, you know, and we'll get there. But that's going to be the hard discussions that we're going to have, and that's going to be the very hard discussions that we're going to have across the entire county because we are working ourselves through that delta every year from FY '25 out six years, there is that going to be that gap. And the more we do not address it early, the steeper that gap is, or the taller that cliff becomes. So I do appreciate it, and I appreciate, I mean, it was a great discussion on whatever day it was, Monday? Yeah, it was a great discussion with the joint meeting, and we're just going to continue to have those open dialogue, but thanks.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke. We have on Wednesday, January 31st, the FY '25 budget hearing, followed by work session in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. And at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, February 14th, Valentine's Day. Oh, board meeting with public participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. And I need a motion for an adjournment.
Before we adjourn, I don't know, I've just felt very heavy after hearing concerning our student behaviors. I mean, our staff members should not be dealing with the kinds of behaviors, and they should not be receiving the kind of consequences, you know, that have come their way. So I, you know, as a board, I think we need to show certainly that we are hearing them, but we need to see what more we can do. And I know, you know, it all becomes individual as far as schools are concerned. I mean, I know that we have individual behavior plans for students, et cetera, but maybe there's some kind of a report or something you can bring back to us that would help us see that, you know, yeah, we hear what some of these behaviors are that you're dealing with in the classrooms, but we need to know how we're dealing with them, what's being done.
And we can certainly do that. We can, we can look at the upcoming board meetings and create some kind of report so that you have a better idea of what it's looking like in classrooms. And, you know, I would say, you know, this is something that we have been discussing on a regular basis as a cabinet and with our administrators. This is a perfect storm of having more and more complex, complex issues with our students coming into our schools, as well as having many, many teachers who retired, and therefore we have new, newer teachers in the classrooms. It's also a product of not having a lot of professional development time for those new folks who are, who are in our classrooms, or, you know, even provisional certification folks who we have in our classrooms and long-term substitutes. We are in a real, we are in a situation here that is very similar to every other system in Maryland, as well as across the nation. And it's a complex, complicated issue, and it's not going to be solved quickly, but I think, you know, blueprint is one of the ways that, that looks at solving some of the issue. But I think we need to continue to look at it within our own system and find ways that we can meet the needs of our students and staff so that we don't lose any more of our staff, and so that our students are getting exactly the education that they need and deserve. So we'll work on that and bring something back.
Right, and that they're held accountable for their behavior. And again, we just, we just need to hear, you know, what's in place, what are we doing to help the students and in turn, help the staff members as well.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey, Ms. Pataglia.
Now, Dr. Dorsey, I completely agree, because, I mean, there's several instances where I've heard from parents as well as educators about some of the issues. And what Ms. Porter said is on target. We have kids who have now have trauma and afraid to go to school because one student will throw a table every single day or a chair. That's, that's scary. That is on point, and at no time should any student feel that they don't want to go to school because they're afraid that another student's going to hurt them. That should never occur, and no, no staff member should feel that way either. So I do think, I wish our hands weren't tied so much regarding the laws, but I do, I do hope that we can look into seeing what we can do because we do need to figure something out.
Ms. Sevigny.
Yeah, I want to echo those comments as well. I mean, we started seeing the behavioral issues many years ago, and we even, you know, developed that task force for, at the elementary level, and now it's not just even at the elementary level, it's across the board. And school safety is a, is a real concern. And something that Ms. Porter said tonight really resonated with me, and it was that, you know, we took a stand during COVID to get kids back into the schools, right, like against, not against the state, but we took a stand to say, this is what, this is what we need to do for our kids. And she said, we need to take a stand again against, so maybe we need to stop saying our hands are tied and, and take a stand of saying, this is what we need to change in Annapolis in order to give our kids a safe environment in their schools. So I'd be in favor of holding a work session on this topic if you think that, I mean, there's been so much discussion and so much attention on blueprint that I think maybe, maybe we need to stop for a minute and think about this and have a work session to at least immediately address low-hanging fruit and maybe develop a position for our legislators and our delegates to take down to Annapolis to say, this is what we need in order to improve the conditions in our schools.
Because they did change one major law.
Because we all agree, we want academic achievement for the students, but if the behavior isn't what it needs to be, you know, the learning can't take place.
Agreed. Ms. Siedgar.
I completely agree with all of the things that have been said today. There have been many occurrences in which students come and explain how their bullying reports weren't treated to the standard that we wished them to be treated, that they weren't taken seriously in regards to very certain situations with administration. Students especially, in this day and age, with being surrounded with social media and being surrounded with technology, need to learn conflict resolution in our schools from a young age in order to learn how to treat your peers with respect and how to engage yourself in a way that is emotionally regulating, because we are seeing a lot of mental health problems with our students in this day and age. And these mental health problems should be treated with empathy and integrity by educators and administrators, and this is a first step in doing so.
Thank you. Well, we need to set a work session up, and we will do that. All right, thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Now, and now I am asking for a motion to adjourn.
The move.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia. All those in favor signify by a aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Have a good evening.